We'll call the work session of order for the evening of April 6. Since the representatives of Davenport have not yet witnessed, why don't we go down to the last item, the special regarding the speed bumps installation on...
That's Gloucester.
Gloucester Drive, Second Street Extended, San Francisco. Randy want to bring us up to date on that?
Yeah, we approved that installation a couple of meetings ago.
Pending, pending that.
Pending actual with the survey. And it was at their request. And their plan was to install some inside the parking areas and the drive-in cars. So anyway, Doug emailed me the other day, I think it was worded, but one of the questions was we could load the speed bump and ask after the business outcome.
Well, okay, why don't you pass the meeting, John?
Why don't you pass the meeting with me? And that's a matter of, I think, a couple hundred yards down where our jurisdiction engineers is basically a void here. Well, the question you did where conservatives is, there's 130 or 135 residences there, and if you remember, we do now, they're in charge of the money from the online call, wanting to call and start to lead. And I don't see a chance of that. And we started leading, particularly the votes, and they end up going at total. But quite honestly, when we did run ups a few years ago, we wouldn't do it until they had 50% response rate in terms of what they're ready. If you look 15 years from now, it's a different story. So mainly by patient on our law. So I think, quite honestly, I'm kind of, I don't know whether you're ever going to hear this word, but I'm kind of hesitant to host the all-hem and the speed bumps because you don't really, I think we have a quarter of our residents just on one way or the other. So we've accounted that in our meeting, which is third Monday. I'm not prepared to tell them that, we're hesitant, so they get a better handle on having to work. A higher number of more representative staff, more representatives.
Result from the survey.
Sorry?
Yeah, when I saw the email that I created chat, separately, it's like a little microphone.
And we was watching, sort of, getting the part that we were managing. No, they're gonna, they're gonna be upset, but, oh well.
Because we did require that.
We did require, we did require response rate.
Two, three, four, five, six.
You know, I was telling you that we were uncomfortable, we wanted to outwork them. Oddly uncomfortable, you know, it's a form of what?
Just issues burn oats. What happens when issues burn oats?
And we used to have them, we can't be treating both those ways. And again, you know, what I'm saying, things, and probably the nervous too, was just readily in the lead of votes. I don't understand the whole IP computer address and stuff, but to me, that's...
There are better ways.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm gonna suggest we do a paper guy, just take one every house and have it handled. It's one vote, it's one vote per household, I think, so for access, it's not a vote.
We're all in agreement on that?
But the speed bump, it's...
We can just do that, we can do that by resolution, by double sign and put it out. The reality is, Mike Evans could finance half the sheriff's firm budget in a week if they had a guy sit up there who was the stop sign controller. Because folks in San Francisco, and I don't know if anybody's here from there, the folks in San Francisco do not recognize stop signs. You know that, you live up to it. I mean, they come out on the green wood and straight through all of them, and they do stop and say, "You stop." But I mean, that's an issue inside, inside them, too.
Why am I doing it?
You stop!
You don't dare not.
But no, you know what I'm talking about, he just said, he just said, you know, I'm just talking in front of my house, and he walks and does it.
Okay, so you want to act on the stop signs?
We might as well.
We need a resolution.
I think we probably need a resolution along this. What are you doing?
Well, what would this do? Speed limit in the...
To less than 25? I need to look at that. All right, I'm not sure.
Doesn't the sign say 20 and burn oats?
Well, if, if that's a...
That's private property, though.
No, for the governor.
Oh, the road is ours.
The road is ours.
The road is ours, that's true. Up to there, well, where we're talking about, we're talking about where it's ours.
We're talking about where it's ours.
So you want to load the speed limit and burn oats in Fertile County?
No, in San Francisco.
So now you want to do it in San Francisco?
Yeah.
I think it's okay. I think it's okay, let me check. 25 is kind of a magic number.
Yeah, our portion on the entrance is 25 right now, and once you get interior from that, it's 50.
Just remind me, in case this... So John's over. So we have the authority. All right, let's go back to item number one on the work session. We have with us tonight from Davenport and company, our financial advisors, Joe Mason and Jennifer, what's your last name?
Jackson.
We're welcome, once again, we see you about every five years or so.
Yeah, it seems like it. Do you need me around?
No, I'm great.
We can do, yeah, we all are.
Joe and I, for background for the council, Joe and I met with Joe and Jennifer maybe a month ago.
Yeah.
Possibly to discuss the sizing of the bond issue to cover our capital improvement expenses, and they have done their due diligence and their homework and presented with this resolution, reimbursement resolution, which means the town can fund some of these costs and can be reimbursed, the funding of bond proceeds, and they do money bond ordinance, and they refunding bond ordinance. So setting the stage, can you kind of tell us, tell the council what these ordinances are for and what we need to do with them?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm good to be with you again. I'm really here for continuity's sake. I've had the good fortune and privilege of working with you in years past, and always delighted to be in this wonderful facility. So, well, my colleague, Jennifer Dirson, is with us tonight. She's been with us for about four months, and she took the lead in putting this presentation together, so I'm gonna defer her. If any questions, we'll...
All right, Jennifer, fun side.
Thank you, well, thank you for having us here. So, as you said, Mr. Mayor, when we met about a month ago, you had identified some capital projects that you had as far as, you know, the town was concerned. So I was going to start by giving an overview of what those needs were that you guys have identified, and then I'll run through what your current debt profile is, and then a proposed plan of finance, which will go in hand in hand with the reimbursement resolution, the new money resolution, and as well as the refunding resolution as well. And then, after I go through the proposed plan of finance, I'll show how that plan of finance will affect the debt service overall as you bring that new money onto the books. So if you turn this slide to, you will see a list of the projects that we discussed about a month ago that add up to just above $1.1 million. Joy and kindly provided the list of projects and the associated costs, and then you'll see at the bottom the funding sources. So you'll see the FY '18 bond, which is about just a little over $900,000, which we would issue at RFP to national, local, and regional banks to get rates for a loan to support that. And then the remainder, just a little over $250,000, will be funded by cash, and that will support the list of projects at the top. So if you turn to the next slide, you'll see an overview of the town's currently outstanding debt, and there's a few things that I want to sort of point out. If you look at the top of this table right here, you'll see that the infrastructure refunding bonds of 2008, you'll see that those roll off this coming May, you have the last payment. So that will give the town some free up, it'll free up some cash flow as far as allowing some new debt service to roll on in its place. In addition, if you look at sort of the left-hand side of the column, you'll see that we've identified a potential refunding candidate, so you could potentially receive some debt service savings, which we'll talk about in a little bit, as well as potential defeasance candidates. And what that really means is that since the town's reserves are strong, you could use a portion of those reserves to sort of pay off those pieces of debt that are supposed to roll off fairly soon, and you could save the interest cost that you would incur otherwise. And we have the numbers on those in later slides.
Which ones are rolling off?
We would recommend that you pay off the taxable pension contribution refunding 2008, and then the taxable refunding of 2012.
You have those little check...
So you'll see, yeah, the potential...
So those are the ones we're gonna pay off, to free up, and that'll free up some.
Yep, and you'll see the numbers as we sort of go through the slide presentation. Sorry, Joe, did you have something? Okay, so if we flip to the next slide, this is just an overview of what your debt service looks like now, a schedule of the principal and interest in total, and as well as a graphic over here, you see it's a declining debt service schedule overall. And then, if you flip to page or slide five, as far as the proposed plan of finance, first I had mentioned that you had that one, the refunding bonds of 2008, the last payment is in May, so that would free up about $82,000 of cash annually. If you decided to defees the 2008 and the 2012 bonds, that would free up about $44,000 annually of cash. And then, if the refunding were to work, and, you know, this is not a definite, and this was not taken into account in any of the sort of numbers that we calculated as far as the impact to debt service savings, it would sort of just be icing on the cake if the refunding were to work. But it could free up a few other, a few more thousand dollars. Right now, you have a pretty good rate of about 2.55% on that, that particular issuance. To get a 3% savings, which is a typical benchmark for local governments as far as refunding savings, you'd need to get a rate of about 1.9% currently. So it's definitely possible, you know, interest rates have come down about, you know, 0.25% over the last few weeks or so, they're trending in the right direction, so it's definitely, it's possible, but if it doesn't happen, you'll see that there's still a savings to be had from the maturing debt as well as the defeasance of the other debt.
So without it, we're gonna free up about $126,000 annually. And if we, if we're able to do it, if we're able to get that 1.9%, we're looking at 133.
Yeah, just a little. Yeah, so it would be like a little bit more, yeah, but it's worth at least putting it out there to see if you could get a rate that's, yep. And if it doesn't, it's no harm.
Okay.
And then you'll see that we've put together some preliminary enterization schedules for the two new bond issues. There will be a tax exempt portion, which will fund the street skate projects, the berm, and the Calis Park issues. And then the taxable will take care of the beach dredging, the pier pavilion, as well as the seawall, since there's some private use aspects to those, and that's why they have to be taxable, and that has been confirmed with the Towns Bond Council. So if you flip to the following page, slide, slide six.
The taxable is for the pier pavilion, the Calis Park, and the seawall?
No, the beach dredging, the pier pavilion, and the seawall.
Okay, not the Calis Park.
No, the Calis Park is part of the taxable portion.
It has to do with private use.
Private...
That's what I just wanted to make it up.
Yeah, I think the one of them actually is just due to the fact that there was no reimbursement resolution. I think that may be the seawall, actually. So instead of private use for that, there had not been a reimbursement resolution put into place, and that's why it fell into the taxable portion.
The seven-year term is designed so that the beach work, typically, you know, about a seven-year cycle, so if I exit over seven years for the time that bond is paid off, must be prepaid for some reason, during the year.
That, that, that was, that's a bad, that I kind of, that's a picture, if you bought a bond, let's have a 15-year bond, it's a new project.
Yeah, so, yeah, you'll see the taxable here, as Joe mentioned, is a seven-year portion, and then the tax exempt, which is a street skate berm in Calis Park, is over a 10-year period that we're, you're financing. And so you can see that the total new debt service that will roll on between those two financings right here on slide five. If you slip, flip over to slide six, this talks about the refunding and defeasance in more detail. So you'll see at the bottom, in the left-hand corner, you're the town's fund balance, and then you basically backed out that $184,000 if you were to pay up those off, which would still leave the town with over a million dollars in reserves and assignments, which is, it's about 40% of general fund revenues, which is very much on par with other towns of a similar size. So there's no real worry about, you know, utilizing those reserves, they're still plenty to, after the payment will be done. And then, as far as the free up cash flow that would result from the defeasance, you can see that on the right side of six in the chart down there. So you would earn the foregone, foregone interest, which is about $16,000 approximately between the two, and then free up the associated debt service, which you can see in green on a yearly basis between those two. Any questions on that? And then if you flip over to the following side, you'll see that this is a revised debt schedule that includes the new money. So you'll see on the left, going from the left to the right, what your existing debt service is, less the defease bonds, so the bonds that you would pay off, the 2008 and the 2012, plus the new money, so that includes both the tax exempt and the taxable, and what your adjusted debt service would be. And you'll see the variance column all the way to the right, so that would be the increase in debt service that you would see. That being said, this is also utilizing the not to exceed amount of 1.1 million, which we think is, you know, will come down, so those numbers will probably come down. This also doesn't take into account any savings you would get from refunding, but as I said, you know, that's not guaranteed, so that would just be an addition to decrease it just slightly. But overall, you know, these are mostly conservative numbers. And if you flip to the following page, on page eight, you'll see as far as the schedule for the financing tonight, I know you're looking at the adoption of the reimbursement resolution and introduction, introduction of the bond ordinances, with next week, the passage of the bond ordinances, then we would follow that up with the release of the RFP to the banks. And the RFPs would then come back on April 27. We would work with Town and Bond Council to negotiate any terms with the proposers, and then come back and present to council on May 4th. They're basically a summary of the responses that we've gotten with the May 11th plan to have the bond resolution introduced and adopted, and once a proposer is sort of decided on May 4th, and then deal closing by the end of May.
So just so people understand, these things we're doing tonight are kind of like enabling interest?
Correct, yes, to allow us to go forward with the financing.
The resolution is to allow us to do, you know, spend some money in advance and then get reimbursed.
Reimbursed for that, yeah.
All right, and then the, the two ordinances are basically setting it up and giving us the power to do what we're gonna hope to do on the, on May 1st.
Yeah. To do the new money and the refunding if it happens to.
To set people on...
Yes, thank you.
If it happens to work, depending on the interest rate.
Correct, correct.
The new money ordinance will go forth.
The new one, that's going.
As long as you approve it, that'll go forth.
The second one depends on...
But the refunding depends on whatever rate we get back from the banks.
Depending on whether you get it.
Correct.
So you like that recommendation, too?
Yes, on May 4th.
Okay.
The only way we're close is if it's a really close call, we'll try and get to at least 3% savings.
I don't know, it's kind of not worth it.
It's, given the total dollars we're refunding, it's kind of not worth it. If it's round the cost, maybe you do it, and you don't, but if we're not even close, then obviously it just costs out.
If you get to 1.9, it's 500 bucks or something.
And there's actually a refunding analysis on page slide 10, if you want to see sort of the numbers behind it. If you were to get the 3% savings, it would give you just under about $50,000 of net present value savings overall, about $6,000 each year.
Well, Joe, in general, is this a reasonable force of action to take?
Absolutely, you, you're in a good position in respect to having healthy fund lines reserves. You're not, you're not earning anything on that money per se, but you can branch for that, you're earning pennies on the dollar in terms of what you're allowed to invest under the investment law for local governments. So a reasonably good use of those funds is to pay off higher interest debt. Plus, by paying off that principal, not only do you save the interest, which means you 're earning a lot of balance that you're investing now, but by paying off the principal, you and the bond is rolling off in May, you create some room under your existing debt budget, if you know, so that you can take out these new projects without having to get service spike even higher. So it's a fine package to get out of our book. We'd love to see the refund award, we still owe the promise and whatever.
Well, in terms of the capital projects, Joe, the numbers are pretty firm, except for one project, the street skate, which has a number of components. Some are in estimates, some we still have yet to receive, some bids.
Okay.
But what you're saying is there's a max in this...
Total new money, I think, is 1.1.
As long as we stay under that.
I believe is what Lindsay included, Bond Council included in the resolution.
So it's...
I'm sorry, includes all your fees?
Yes.
Lindsay's fees, any type of bank fees that you have.
Yeah.
There's a little wiggle room in there because our number is just slightly different than yours, we did some revision.
When do, you know, when do you think you're like firm enough with the street skate numbers?
Well, we still have here tonight. I'm just kidding. Hopefully, the next... What, what, you tell us when do we have to have it done, Mike?
We can always send out, we're gonna put this RFP out, April...
27?
14, yeah.
Probably not gonna be much more in the next week, but before it comes to you back, first of all, we can remove the date back a little bit. And we can always send out the notice, the RFP, say it's for a certain higher amount, if you discover that you need it.
Well, I don't think...
We would have to go back to the RFP, see you adopt, so that would move us back.
I think the more likely scenario is that it would be under.
Oh, that's...
That's not gonna be the problem.
No.
Oh, I have another question. How, what's the rule to move dollars between projects? Let's say that the park, for example, is in the $30,000, it's $20,000, can we move that money between projects, or somehow?
As long as they don't move between taxable and non-taxable.
Yes, correct. Yeah, because those each have different on to it.
How do we list this at 1.25, 0.9% interest rate?
How do we, how did we arrive at that?
How feasible is it to that, that may not be rolling off?
I mean, it's possible for more of, you know, a local bank, Joe probably knows better than I do, but it's a potential, but it's not guaranteed.
It seems obvious, well, I mean, be honest.
For 10 years, but there's a couple things to consider. Number one, you're in a different industry shape. Number two, Town County is now triple, triple A rated in your important community within Town County, so that's gonna attract interest banks. And number three, and probably the most important, if you think back to some of the earlier things, for those of you that seen your own, or we used to place loans with SunTrust and PNC for the most part, they're effectively out of business. Not, not that the banks have failed, but SunTrust has changed their sort of corporate focus such that when they do loans, they don't have another business relationship with you, so they make them work. So they're gonna leverage the balance sheet with the real estate, I should get feed income. PNC has largely pulled back, particularly in Maryland, from the, they have one banker working that we know of in this basin, Walton area, and they really have no player. The reason I say that is there are some, I'll call them muñang's, hungry the banks, that have given, they've been surprising us with rates we didn't think we could get. That's why we thought, it's worth a shot. Those would be Key Bank, TD Bank, Carbo Bank just merged with a bank called United Bank. Previously, they were known to do it only, but the merger allows them to get into Maryland, so all we need to get, we just need to get what we want.
Yeah.
So TD, Carbo, what was the other one you said?
Key.
Key, so those are kind of the players now?
Lately, I mean, you just, you don't see, you might, on the seven-year piece, you might see a bank of America, or MNT, or Wells Fargo, but they just really have not, for whatever reason, they just are not players in the true role.
Yeah, when you mentioned that, the number we were doing yesterday was BBNT, I think was one, I think PNC, and I think SunTrust was three.
SunTrust was one to everything, for a lot of...
I don't know why we ended up getting that.
We had SunTrust, a bunch of them.
Yeah, they were, and, you know, talking to that banker regularly, and he's, you know, brings tea from pulling his nose, he doesn't like the business he's in, you know, because Atlanta, corporate, has kind of hamstrung what local bankers can do, so.
Have they developed some kind of great system that can be visible on?
No, it's really more how they wanted to use their balance sheets.
Is the money not big enough for it to operate? I mean, this is a million dollar bank, that's not...
That has, that is, but these, these banks that we have encountered is much successful in the last year or so, they're trying to break into market, and what you do is try to break into market, you offer, you know, optimal prices to try to build your market share, and that's what we're seeing. Well, certainly, when you include, everybody could always include, I just don't expect anything improved for that, but I think these other banks are certainly be more likely to give something to do with it. BBNT, you mentioned, we just closed, and BBNT finished their first time in two years. It's the usual, it's just, the usual players are not, they're fucked right now.
But you gotta do hungry your banks, and loan to go that way.
Yes, everybody can handle it, some...
Any questions right now, or Jennifer? I have a motion, first of all, to approve resolution number 17 dash, approve, 17 dash or three, the reimbursement resolution.
Seven.
Or second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I approve.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Okay. I need someone to introduce ordinance number 17 dash or four, the new money bond ordinance. The, I need, uh, someone to introduce ordinance number seventeen dash over four, the new money bond ordinance. We're not voting on this, just a statement.
I'll review this ordinance seventeen dash over four to find it.
Just leave it to read the heading. Read the title. Oh, you don't want to read all that?
Yeah, just the.
Usually just read the first paragraph. It's a whole page. First paragraph is a whole page, so you see. Okay, I think you should go down as far as, uh, let me see. But just to, so the public knows when they have to go. Proceeds there to be used for public financing.
All right, ordinance seventeen dash over four, ordinance of the council of the town of North Beach authorizing and empowering the town of North Beach to issue and sell debatable obligation bonds for one more series for hundred times of added people not to exceed one million one hundred thousand dollars. The proceeds of the sale thereof to be used and applied for public purposes of financing, reimbursement, or refinancing costs as defined in the ordinance of components. Projects identified herein as shooting state project determining to see the bonds are sold, um, by property or still without advertising. This is a petition pending bills unless by retention of account with time or the rise of sale, concealing bonds as public sale after publication, uh, dissemination of notice of sale.
The ordinance is allowing the town to basically vote a bond for one point one million dollars to do capital improvement projects. Now, next week, next week, uh, we need, uh, you know, we need to make sure we have five votes, because, uh, you're going to need to get it passed, to get both of these passed, you're going to need to do it by emergency. Normally, we introduce an ordinance and then it gets, uh, it gets voted on in a second reading, but more than ten days later. All right, this is only a week later. All right, so we need to do, go by emergency, and the only reason for the emergency is to shave three days off. So the public's going to get seven days notice instead of ten. All right, that's what the emergency is, all right? And it will need it on both, you know, if we do the refunding, uh, we'll need it on both. Well, probably pass it anyway. All right, the refund, you know, just so, just so we know we have the leverage to do it later in the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah, because it's just an, it's just an enabling ordinance, right?
Yeah.
We don't have to do it.
No.
Right, okay, good, all right. All right, then I need, uh, someone to move the introduction of ordinance seventeen dash over five, which is the refunding bond ordinance.
I'll do that.
You want to read it, Jen? I'll let you read the whole thing.
No, you don't. I'll start reading and you can stop.
We just want the public to know what we're doing.
I'll read this, the original ordinance, uh, seventeen dash over five, the ordinance of the council of the town of North Beach authorizing and empowering the town of North Beach to issue and sell debatable obligation refund bonds for one or more series for hundred times of added people not to exceed two million three hundred three one thousand dollars for the original refunding bond. The proceeds of the sale thereof thereof to be used and applied for public purposes of currently refunding or advanced refunding in whole or in part for town's outstanding public improvement refunding bond of two hundred and eleven, as described here in. Determining that each series of the original refunding bonds is sold in private sale, the gaps has been filled unless by resolution, the council of the town provides for the sale of any series of the original refunding bonds that from sale after publication, dissemination of the notice of sale.
Do you all even need any more from us for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We need more hearing from you.
See you for super night.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, we have on the agenda discussion regarding the crosswalk installation on Chesapeake Avenue. Just as a way of bringing this into perspective, we had looked at, uh, possibility of placing papers at, at the intersections wherever we have these crosswalks on Chesapeake Avenue. And for a number of reasons, I've decided that is not, uh, the route that we're inclined to move. So in terms of our investigation into alternatives, Donnie, uh, has come up with this compressed thick form thermoplastic crosswalks, which are the ones, I think, John, that, uh, you want to check the floor?
Yeah, we did check the floor, and he was able to tell.
And let me just say, we're, this is Todd Alvin, right?
This is Todd Alvin, and he, he represents Alternative Paving Concepts.
Jen, can you tell us a little bit about Todd, whatever lesson you want to tell us?
Okay. And as you know, council knows, we've been looking into different alternatives. We kind of got the bid back the first time I left the Mary's over this, uh, brick paper. I don't know, it was a real price, but we also had a lot of issues with the home local times, uh, places that had them a couple of years later, this and all that money, and it started failing. So we started looking around. Todd represents a company that, we found two companies that did two different types. We kind of, Todd was, you know, picking up the drive down from Delaware to like, the other gentlemen's and, uh, the jurors, he was wanting to drive down. We kind of wanted to show you Todd's product first, because Steve, he'll play a little bit more of that script piece, and Maryland State approves it on the state highway. And also, this product, uh, we have some.
I have, I'll deal with the issues, but I'm hanging there.
Places that we use, uh, uh, city law uses a lot, and Todd, because they were born in DC, they use it a lot. The closest place I can find the other product was in New Jersey, and then everyone's going township that uses it. And the next closest place is, uh, California. So we're kind of, you know, there's a little bit of Todd, isn't there, because they're close, you know, they're local, you know, like, and it's been approved by Maryland State Highway. And, um, there's two different type processes. I don't want to say that it's kind of, but this product can be applied, lights on, can be done in a couple of hours, for a low product, looks like two weeks. So we're kind of, we're not new to stuff, put it out there because of price, but I want to show you this, because I feel this, me and myself, I feel this might be a, a better product for us to choose.
Is this the D tree the one?
Yes.
The way through our.
Yeah. Todd, why don't you tell us?
Yeah, let Todd have it in his swing.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions, you have a night too, please, feel free to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank council, I appreciate you being here today to speak about our product. Um, as, as Todd said, I'm Todd Alvin from Alternative Paving Concepts. We are, uh, the certified applicator in the mid Atlantic region for our product. Our product is, is closely regulated by who can install it. Um, our business is just installed on network based, we're not involved in any other discipline other than that. Uh, our main location is out of Virginia, but we also have a location lower part of Virginia as well, that's Delaware. Our product is probably one of the better solutions out there. I'm familiar with, with, uh, the other products you guys are considering as well, for a couple of reasons. First of all, the, the doorability, overall durability of our product. Let me just kind of pass this around. Our product is a, an aggregate reinforced thermoplastic. Why I say aggregate reinforced is very important to know that, um, when you think of thermoplastics, you think of line striping, uh, stop bars, those types of things, which contain glass beads. Overall, the glass beads, um, when cars and traffic goes over them, it doesn't stand well up to traffic for a number of years. Our product is aggregate reinforced, it literally contains, uh, an element known as corundum. And on a more scale, where diamond is the hardest element, corundum is the second hardest. Um, that corundum actually goes through the whole entire part of thermoplastic as well as the color. So over time, obviously, with more traffic, it will eventually wear, but it's important to know that you will still have the corundum and the color, um, still in there. Uh, corundum is important because it's, it's non-skid, okay? So it, when it gets wet, it's not going to become slippery at all. The impressions are, you had mentioned about heat process, so our process is actually very simple to install on our product. There's really only three basic steps, and there's no amounts of time in between those steps for curing. Basically, we lay down, um, we site where the crosswalk's going to be or the area for this product. And we actually achieve the adhesion in two forms. We have a mechanical adhesion and a chemical adhesion. So the first product that goes down is an adhesive, rolls out very easily. And then our crews place these panels in the crosswalk area. The panels are two by two, they can be trimmed to whatever size that the crosswalk is. Once those are placed, and that is a very short period of time, probably fifteen, twenty minutes, um, we then bring in a reciprocating heater. It's a huge difference than a torch, um, because what we want to do is create even heat throughout the process. We literally are heating, uh, heating up that thermoplastic to about three hundred and eighty-five degrees. And that heat actually transmits through the thermoplastic into the asphalt. So the, the adhesive creates the chemical bond, but the heat actually creates the mechanical bond. So it's impossible to pull up our product, because if you were to pull it up, you'd have to pull up the asphalt. It's permanently attached. When it's heated up, shortly after it's heated, it, it receives a cooling temperature down to about a hundred sixty-five degrees, which happens within about ten, fifteen minutes. And then we'll take a metal template like this based on the design that you want, and we'll actually put it on the surface and stand it down into it. And the grab lines are only three eighths of an inch, so our crosswalks are still ADA compliant. Um, so there's no worries about trip points or anything like that. Uh, there's no type of maintenance to it. Once it's down, that's it. You can use any types of deicing chemicals on it, salts, not a problem whatsoever, because we're not a Betunus type of cement product that, um, has a problem with, with salts and the grinds that are used on the road by Maryland State Highway. Um, as, as Donnie mentioned, our product is on Maryland State Highway. We've worked with Maryland State Highway on a, a couple of different projects, uh, kind of rural, uh, throughout DC, the northern Virginia area, Baltimore. Um, and we have other applicators, so there's a lot of it in Philadelphia, New York, Boston. So our product can be in any climatic temperature, there's no issues, uh, with that. And it actually reflects with the pavement. So it's still a flexible product, so you won't see cracks or anything like that. Where Betunus concrete product, if it's too stiff, there's potential to, uh, to, to crack. Assortment colors, it's probably the closest thing looking realistic thing to a unit paper. Obviously, I'm very biased, uh, but if you guys took a trip to the, uh, rural locations or any of the others, you'd probably be convinced that it looks like the real thing. This product's been available in the United States and abroad since about two thousand and seven. Uh, it actually replaced the product that was similar to Betunus concrete product that, that, um, had some issues in, and this is a better engineered product. Uh, once the product's down, one of the great advantages as well is how it gets installed. We can install it at night time, so we don't need circumambient temperatures or the sun for, for proper curing and anything like that. The other thing is, we can open it up to traffic within fifteen, twenty minutes. As soon as the guys get the equipment out of the way, we can open it right up to traffic. So you don't have a curing cycle of six or eight hours, um, for the product. And I'll entertain any questions that you folks might have.
You said, you said it's durable, Todd.
Yes.
What does it look like after five years?
Five years, it'll still, as I said, the material, okay, will still look the same. Now, the, where, where you generally see wear in our product, and probably you might not see it, it depends on the ADT of, of, of the traffic, the daily traffic count, uh, but our product can withstand fifteen thousand ADT per day per lane. Where you would see the, 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 um, wearing over time would be where any turning occurs. Um, but again, we're talking, probably, I don't know what your traffic count is here, but I imagine that, uh, there would be parts of time. I think the stuff in rural has been down since two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. A lot of it is new, but some of the original stuff, like on Fourth Street, wasn't sold back then, and it's still the original stuff.
And when you ride over, do you, do you feel like you're riding over something? Well, the reason I ask is some of our, the measures that we're taking out there, we're restricting the wind in an attempt to slow traffic down.
Yeah.
So to me, it would be an advantage if people see it, it has some kind of traffic calming, uh, quality to it.
We have other products more for traffic calming. You're probably not going to notice enough of, you know, like if it was on brick or cobble or something like that, you probably, to be honest with you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't notice that. But as far as traffic calming, um, we also have other products that are used in conjunction with this, other thermoplastic products, and I didn't bring anything like that with me. Little diamonds that are put, um, on the side where the, uh, transfer strip is. So, um, the, the crosswalk, let's say it's, uh, and with Maryland State Highway, do you guys maintain these roads yourself, or are they part of Maryland State Highway?
We maintain them.
Okay, so you, you probably are not restricted to having maybe an eight foot width. But generally speaking, we'll have our decorative product, whatever width you decide. And then what legally makes it a crosswalk is the white transfer strip. Okay, I'm deciding it's six or twelve inches. Uh, Maryland, for Maryland roads, has to be minimum eight foot, um, total out to out. Those white strips are retroreflective, okay? So the, the MUTCD standards say those, those stripes have to be retroreflective. What's inside that area cannot be. But outside that area, as far as traffic coming goes, there's also these little triangles that would go, um, leading up to it, which helps to calm traffic as well. And those are things probably, you know, your city can actually put down themselves, um, later on, they're very inexpensive, and those are also retroreflective.
So you haven't talked about the white strips?
Okay, and that's a, that's a premark. I mean, we, we usually install those, it doesn't have to be, um, but, uh, whatever width that you, you folks decide on for the city. And it's a different type of product, it is a glass beaded product. And generally, what you're going to see is that should wear out long before the crosswalk, okay? Because it contains the glass beads which, which control that retroreflectivity.
But as part of your contract, will you put the white strips down also?
We could, yes. It's a, it's a different thermoplastic product altogether, but it depends on some of the larger projects where there's a line striping going in, they might have a line striper do that. We prefer because we know how to properly heat it up, so that you not destroy the work we've already done. So it could be either way, Mr. Mayor.
What do you think, though?
We, we probably included a bit of that, you know, it's so close to the crosswalk, then we'd be done away, you know, as they say, I would. I just got a broken shoe, but maybe they do it for the payment. Um, you know, if we find a super price, if we, you know, you paint white stretch, and I think it's sort of all.
You could use the, the thermoplastic.
Regular paint that would be, uh, make the white stripe better.
As a bit after.
Everyone's, you know, we do decide to do it, make them that nice, I think we should have them, and then we, we would touch those up with paint, you think like they wear out like you're saying. I'm just thinking in my head, if the white stretch will wear out, can you paint over top of that?
It's a thermoplastic, you wouldn't. But what, what's easily done is with generally people, you could, uh, eradicate those, um, and then just put another striped strip down, because we call that preformed thermoplastic. So they come in two foot by one foot or six inches, whatever you decide, and those are just laid across the road, and then we heat those as well.
How long, how long do those last?
Um, those will not last as long as a crosswalk. And again, that generally, not so much traffic, um, but depending on the snow plows, um, if they let their plow hit the, hit the pavement, it could possibly damage. their pile hit the pavement, it could possibly damage the white strips.
Calhoun County, for instance, they put their own down, like the arrows you see for a turn lane, they can't give up, it's just a burner torch, you know, sometimes this thing, we're just, with what type of equipment. We've got to use the same type of equipment, obviously, in Ohio, either, maybe probably.
So when you put the white bars down, you put the adhesives down also?
That doesn't require it, but yes, we do anyway, yes. But it's not required for the premark.
And when you heat it, does it kind of mechanically lock to the asphalt or not?
Yes, the premark does the same exact thing. We can create that chemical adhesion, but without a doubt, it's mechanical, that has to happen all the time. And yeah, that's the big advantage of our equipment, is that it's very hard, if you've watched folks with torches, very hard to control that temperature, whereas our equipment literally will turn off once we achieve that proper temperature. And that's what's so critical, because you could burn thermoplastic very easy. You could actually burn the asphalt if it's not properly done.
That would be a lot less expensive, though. I mean, that type of material, put that kind of in a natural crosswalk.
Oh, yeah.
And we add that to the bid, it would be nowhere near the price of a natural crosswalk material.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Well, I think as part of our decision making, we'd like to know what the cost would be of the white bars.
Sure. Okay, that's fine.
We'd like stuff to make it to, oh, now.
I'll be glad to discuss that with you. You mean the pricing? It's generally about nine dollars a linear foot for that. So it's not quite half the price of the actual crosswalk material itself.
Nine dollars per linear foot?
Correct.
Depending on the width of it?
Yeah, it doesn't change that much with the width. So if you go to eight inches or six inches, six inches isn't necessarily half the price.
What do we have?
It's about thirty feet wide, I'd say.
I mean, why?
We got nine inches right now. Is it just because it's a paintball? We're pretty close on ours, we're not getting quite close.
Yeah, absolutely.
It'll be more like twelve inches probably.
We can use a six, an eight, or a twelve. Anything other than that, that'd have to be custom cut in it, we'll look on that.
No, our crosswalks are eight foot, they would look pretty much eight foot everywhere, so you know, one foot or, like, say eight inches or a foot makes it look that beautiful.
So you said how much a linear foot?
About nine dollars a linear foot.
You said about nine, you mean eight?
That's why we're all tied here, not in a budget discussion.
I take credit cards. Yeah, no, it'll be nine dollars a linear foot.
Is that the only type of effect required by Maryland law when you do white stripes?
Well, it's not so much Maryland, but the MUTCD is, yeah, which is the overall. But yes, and it has to be retroreflective.
And then is it the total width of the crosswalk, it would be eight edge to edge included in the light, or?
Yes, it depends what you want. I mean, obviously, your truncated domes, it has to fit within the, you know, especially around the corners and stuff like that. But fairness speaking, Maryland is no less than eight foot on their state roads.
And you have done this work, supplied your product to the state highway?
I don't work directly for a state highway, but through a sub. Generally, I'll work through either GC or an asphalt contractor.
But your product is on state?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Anybody else have any questions, Todd, while we have it here?
Yeah, I'd assume that the pricing, the standard is all that, this is one price of the list.
Exactly. But my guess is you probably want something that goes with the town.
I would, I would gray yellow.
Yeah.
What's that now, what is standard, what's the standard?
They got two color, like the standard, and there would be the standard across, and then like an extra.
But those ones up on top are standard?
And the ones on the left as well.
So the standard?
Yeah.
These are standard.
And there's other colors as well.
What is that about, eighth of an inch?
It's a hundred fifty mils.
Thick?
Correct, is the thickness of the material.
This right here?
Yes.
That little thing?
Definitely, a hundred fifty mils.
A hundred fifty mil?
Mils, mils.
Mil, I'd say it's not mil either.
Yeah, mils.
Mil, that's a, that's probably the thickness right there with the?
That's the actual material.
This is right here?
Yep.
Oh, that's the actual thickness there.
It's actually just shy of three inches, a little wide because of the brat lines and stuff.
What happens, have you ever had to replace it?
Oh, yeah. I mean, utility repairs, without a doubt. I don't know how much of that you have here, but in DC, that is fairly common, and we're called in, and it's a very easy repair. So someone just comes along, they do the utility repair, they replace the asphalt, literally, they'll blend right in.
And it has to be put down, or you'd like to put it down on fresh asphalt?
We can't put it on anything that's too oxidized. So we generally work with asphalt that's less than three years old, that hasn't had any type of coatings put on it. And obviously, the fresher the better, because what our product indirectly does is preserves the pavement as well. So that pavement is not, will not oxidize, it's a business there.
You said this was ready for fifty thousand cars a day, what is the lifespan of that?
It'll be much shorter than, say, eight or ten years, without a doubt. Do I know exactly? It really depends on type of traffic that goes upon it. You know, obviously, the best is just cars going straight across, because more friction happens when vehicles turn.
But eight, ten years probably isn't bad.
Yeah, I mean, the rural stuff's been down there almost ten years. Pardon?
Almost ten.
Yeah, yeah. So in nothing's, we have done repairs, because the gas company, whoever it was, we had to do a lot of repairs because of utilities. But it's really proven itself.
All right, I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, the questions would be just kind of, they're like, okay.
All right, thank you, Todd.
I'll leave this sample with you, the top sample with you.
All right.
Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate you driving down.
No problem.
Okay, let's move on to the discussion about the lighting selection.
Well, when I got to the town, and then someone's coming, I'm not a hundred percent sure. The council kind of wanted downlighting, and a couple of times, and they kind of like the California, which is called style picture. What that is, you have it there now, it's a very short. I want the California light, and so these shirts are like that, and it shows you, they got different bulbs available, or different, I'm picking a lot, but it kind of tells you everything about that. Kind of shows you the pattern. To be honest, it's so many lights that are out. This is what so many light have on the bottom of that right, that's for.
The last mark, from the package, that's a really good.
Yeah. That was a better one, this is like one of the, and that's actually a technical.
This one shows it's like, kind of color, that it's a lot.
Right.
Probably more power. Not the pattern, sure. And that's what we dislike?
That one, yeah. And these are the type patterns you can get into, you can get this California style light, kind of a combo, get any one you have. We have the spec work out in Markham, so you don't have to.
But the bulb should put a bulb itself?
Not for the fixture. Not for the fixture, right. That's what makes choosing what's so complicated, there's each thing in there, choosing bulb, you know, wattage.
Reflectors.
Yeah, all that stuff.
This is determined by the reflectors in the light.
But the thing that you need to act on, because we have eight weeks of lead time upon the fixtures.
Right.
We, you know, we ordered the poles, so they don't get here before the fixture does.
People will say, oh, I'm coming up. So we're waiting, you know? And it's easy to say that, oh, you know, we got a couple of little time to look at it, but now we ordered today, that means it'll be here June sixth, you know, that's eight weeks. And June sixth seems a long way off, but we, you know, talked about it, so. And I'm, you know, we're glad to go, we can try to pick other styles that exist, as, you know, I get a couple of West Coast out, there's probably, you know, a hundred different styles of lights, so I'll maybe try to pick something. I like it, you all like it? And we do have the, and that's what, you know, all this one, and we actually have one almost similar to that at the HOGA Park. One here there, so you can let us see it, the whole, the light in there, they're pretty similar, almost exactly the same light.
Is this in the orange, the front?
Yeah, it was in the brown, you know, the first one.
Yeah, this would put it back in, and throw it actually down.
That's a little dark picture, you can't hurt it. I think you're better looking to see actually.
I mean, certainly, that's what you have to cost, any money.
That is, yeah, a budget package, running practice provided, didn't have that, and what we have to do is such a, announce some stuff, get this out, we did, we could be an even better place, so maybe we'd have to do it. Derek Marshall guy came in last week, he was, he was a rep for this company, but I think he might have bought an NLS light, so maybe we put it out, he might have five areas in the area where it's, he's not the same.
What can we order, you can't order it right?
I'm not sure, I think it's about three to four, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. You might have to get like a lighting distributor, you know, every warehouse, they might just sell two distributors. They're not a hundred percent sure.
Well, they might sell some.
Some good things out of it, if we give it some kind of way we want to take that, so it's a lot of this there.
Well.
Randy, you're okay with that style?
Yeah, I maybe can make sure.
The bulb?
Well, yeah, the bulb, when you say this, it's the center side does this, and then the bulb is the temperature. But we make all our decisions really easy, and I, you know, Ford did that, so they'll need to know what type of bulb we want, like a bulb we want for a Ford V8, we do it for Ford.
That's, I mean, they're probably close to the same price, it's just matters which is the bulb price. But what we, what I'm kind of, is, well, that is, Derek works, you know, with other municipalities, it's the amount of lights, and so it's kind of around them, and that pattern, you know, if you do a, he thinks if he came out with the street, like, if he put in that forty lights out of the block in Spark, I probably would still, I mean, the city of Bereva, he's a lot with the city of Bereva, so they replaced all the lights down in downtown Bereva, he did all that, all pretty, kids were working this, it's all kind of, it was wearing, using them for.
So maybe what, what actually, does the council need to take some note?
Well, I would recommend we put one of these kind of bulbs in, and like, for example, the three, you have like three thousand, four thousand, five thousand. Three thousand is soft light, so the normal, like, easy on your eyes, what most bulbs are, figure out. Five thousand is a crazy bright light. I would recommend four, have it four, because it stops some of the, like, the other ones have a lot of spill backwards, and that's one for that, here, there's a lot of people that features the streetlights, a lot of the whole front light. And the way you're setting the poles off the sidewalk, it would light the sidewalk down the street, and this goes a little bit more into the street. So that would be my recommendation, to the board, and then probably the three thousand watt, because it, not very much, I was wondering, do you want to put it there now? The downlight will help that, and you won't be like running out of light, so I would recommend three thousand watt.
Derek was, I'm pretty sure he did the pad number four, like, we sent, but he said nobody liked it, rather four thousand, it's in the time, so, and it's not too bright, but it's not too, the four thousand, you know, loads of, you know, the ton.
My question is, if we do this, will we be able to get rid of the lights on the other side of the street that are there now?
Maybe have one wooden pole light, the smaller one, and we do, I got a broker in request, we need to get rid of that now.
On Sister's Corn?
Sister's Corn, it's kind of fact, we're there.
The arm ones?
But the arm ones, I mean, we can wait and see how much light we get off of these. They like the intersection and everything on that side, we would really recommend they can make that, so we can kind of see what this is.
That would be more of an aim.
Four, Sister's Corn. Right. But I mean, that might be somebody you want to look at, because this may, this may very well be ranked up enough across the road when you get ready. The bar one's there, and now they'll, they'll sew the wires, we got to clean up that side of the street a little bit, and do that side of the street, we get ready to go on.
Nicky, you want to make a question?
Sure. An admission, we look forward to type of work layout, you know, the four thousand, like, he was recommending four thousand, and this style of going in?
California picture, and that's.
So we can put that out, he did.
Okay, can you all?
Five.
There's a second?
Oh, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we all have to put that out. If we have to get it from the distributor.
Right, once again, that's more than we do, we'll be feedbacks later, later. These one showed, not that we all, this one showed, like, he did a thing where, it's just kind of on the top of the pole, bringing the fluid poles, so actually, the ones that did it look better than this, was the one down inside the fluid pole. It slips inside, that's what's up.
So now, I always question about like, the existing poles that are on Chesapeake, they're owned by BGD, correct?
Right, that's fair.
I believe, I remember his saying, if BGD, I would understand, in fact, was said.
Yeah, we're gonna, you know, these last three BGD, when they come out to, that's where their lighting guy, he came, we had a meeting with him, because I was gonna call him, we didn't prepare a pitch or whatever, but then we talked about this project, and he said, you know, gave you the option, so we can go and ask, but he said, when they did this now, they're not used to them, so we're kind of storing them at the north, using those spare parts, you know, the ones on Bayou.
I was also thinking about, there, down the end of Bayou, we got the border block, there are all those lights that have been pulled. Pretty positive that they're, they're, obviously, they're not pro-condition, but they're better than just the wood poles that are there. You know what I'm saying, down there?
Well, we might be able to BGD, because we do like to, to replace those with the.
Are they owned by BGD?
Yeah, because they're, everything, the size, they add them, it's owned by BGD, all the, you know, back there, and then the wood poles, they don't know, but any time you see a yellow tag one, that's a BGD pole. We only, only the ones in the, they were done because we wanted to, because it's like, maybe like five years ago, and they, they, it was, we still merge, it would be the same type situation, please, you're shooting the red, and you sense they're not, the ones on Bayou. But we, we were talking to Paul, who's the name, BGD rep, I think one of the options we had, we wanted to leave these in place and just get the same exact light, BGD becoming a maybe upgrade, and because they're big on LED now, so they have a program, that's a lot of, they might upgrade, there's free charge of wood ones with LED type poles, but we still pay them off the fee and everything, including the parents, it's like, and just like, and just like, and we can look in, I can, actually, I got a follow-up, you know, when we tell them which way we decided to go here, or when we did it, this is, and we can ask them, like, for putting the work over the first dimension, because they're cleaning, they're kind of, they're, they're checking for whatever, that's kind of, we're gonna, and that's, and then, like you said, all down the line.
Okay. Well, that finishes the vote session, Mr. Mayor. Any questions to adjourn?
The hood?
Second?
Second.
All right, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Please adjourn.